Good evening, it's 7 o'clock. We'll call the meeting in order. Karen, can you take your roll, please?
Commissioner Kubal?
Here.
Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Young?
Yo.
Commissioner Steeler?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
And Chair Gerard?
Here.
Sorry, what's that?
We ask you, if you're able, to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. We do to the public the words of the stands. A one nation, under God, being individual, for clever duty and justice are all.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
So moved?
I have a motion, I have a second. Justin, second. It's a non-negotiable motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. The chair would like to pull, a, the planning commission meeting minutes. So I guess we don't have a consent agenda then? Or you still need a vote on that?
Well, are you pulling them to modify them?
To explain myself.
Oh, imagine you can explain yourself and then if you needed an edit, then the motion could, for the consent agenda, could be to modify that item.
So it's, where's my notes? It's on page four. Give me a second. It's where I state that, um...
Okay, with the proposed distance?
I'm sorry?
The proposed distance, you said page four?
It's on, I should have been a little better at this. On page four, the paragraph where it starts, Commissioner Young commenting on the variances. And I want to state that I misspoke. And the minutes are correct, but there was not a specific variance that came forward that was denied. It was actually a building plan, a site plan or preliminary plat review. So I just want to clean up that that's what I should have said. Not what I did say. So I don't know how you, what you do with that, Karen, except thank me for that valuable input.
Alright, I got it.
So with that, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes with that minor modification. So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on our motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item six. We have a public hearing for ordinance number 722, a zoning ordinance text amendment on electronic billboards. The way this will work this evening, the city will present the application as they know it. We will then, as commissioners, ask any questions we may have. And we'll ask applicant if they would like to speak. After that, we will have a public hearing. I'll give further direction at that point. After the public hearing, it'll come back for the planning commission for some final decisions and motions. So with that, Abby, you're presenting?
Yes, thank you Chair Gerard, members of the commission. Many of you know, you should be, remember that we've been discussing electronic billboards since November of last year when Charles Bulcom had applied for a zoning text amendment to change the code in certain ways. Since that time, the city, this commission and this council elected to kind of run a concurrent path with the original request, or at least kind of table, I guess I should say, the original request by the applicant and draft its own billboard specific to electronic, its own ordinance specific to electronic billboards, which are called dynamic, I want to make sure I get this wrong, dynamic display billboards. That's the difference between a static and a dynamic display billboard. So since the time that you've last seen this, the city council has reviewed the ordinance as well. There were a couple just different changes that the council directed staff to look into and to incorporate. So what you'll see tonight is changes to the distance requirements. The council has, currently the code says 500-foot separation distance for all billboards. But if it was going to be a dynamic display billboard, they would, the council is recommending a 13-foot, 100-foot separation distance. As a reminder, this body wanted a much more significant distance between static and digital display, didn't matter which ones. I think if I remember right, this body wanted 2,000 square feet. It might be something that you'll want to discuss after you take public comment. Additionally, the city council wanted to see the design of the, all billboards eventually in the community have just more aesthetically pleasing design. So staff has incorporated some concealment requirements that essentially they would have, that all the exposed metal would be concealed. So when we look at zoning text amendments, we look to see that they're consistent with the comp plan, they're not in conflict with the zoning code, and overall that there's a general public benefit. With regards to the comp plan, electronic billboards will help support local small businesses because it'll give another advertising opportunity in the community that isn't maybe a long-term contract as an existing billboard is, that helps promote our economic development goals. Next, there's no conflict with the zoning code. We are just going to repeal our existing billboard ordinance and replace it with the new one. And then lastly, the general public benefit is just greater diversity, more consistency and continuity with Forest Lake's billboards along with those that are in the adjacent communities. So before you, tonight is a draft ordinance and for your consideration, a recommendation to the city council. Staff is recommending you move to recommend the city council approve the enclosed ordinance. I did include just for you on the dais, a printed version of the ordinance because there was some just formatting track changes included in your packet that were unnecessarily put in that way. I am here, if you have any questions, as is the original applicant, Mr. Chuck Bulcom. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners? Doug, Dan?
Yes, and we may have discussed this, but I noticed that the language changed on elevation from an elevation of I-35 to now 40 feet above grade. And my only concern with that is the one billboard on 11th grade is a good eight feet higher than 35. Does that mean that they'll be able to, that when they make that electronic, they can make it a lot taller, 10 feet taller?
That change would require a permit change. I believe the existing ordinance is an or, and whichever is less. And so if this commission would like to retain that language, staff and working with our legal counsel thought having a one consistent measurement...
I think one consistent measurement's a good way to go. I just want to make sure that that new consistent measurement isn't going to change any of the, give, create an opportunity to increase the height that wasn't previously intended. If it was, if it was an or, if it was in there as an or before, then it wouldn't change anything, so.
Commissioner Steeler, I will look that up. I believe it was an or, but it could have, it could have been an or, whichever was less. And if that's the case, then there could be an unintended consequence that we wouldn't necessarily want to consider or allow. So let me take a look at that while we're moving along.
Susan?
You're looking at a 500-foot separation distance between billboard signs. So you're looking at 11 billboards per mile on each side, correct?
The current code is a 500-foot separation distance per side.
And what we were hoping to do as a planning commission, since we're looking at this ordinance and have a chance to increase that, that's what the planning commission was recommending. 11 billboards per mile is a lot. I mean, it truly is. And when the planning commission members talked about what we're seeing in other cities, that it is really, really a lot. I also heard your comments about the very significant benefits to businesses in the city. And I haven't had a chance to get deep into this, but my concern is that if there's a certain number of minutes that a local business would be provided, if they're between 10:00 at night and 5:00 in the morning, that really does not help our businesses. So will there be some work in the ordinance to make sure that if we are proposing this as a benefit to local businesses, that those businesses will have favorable times?
There is not, but there is language in there about favorable times and sporadic through the entire day for any sort of public service or emergency service messaging. So we, as a public entity, if we have to get emergency notifications out or any of that sort of stuff, there are provisions built in there that we will have that precedent. And that if there's, let's say, hometown holiday being a good example of a local community event, that we wouldn't just get that 10 to 5 a.m., that it would be around the clock. It would be up to those individual operators and those individual business owners to work on what the timing is that works in their budget, their, all those factors.
My concern is that often, small, local businesses don't have the dollars to pay a premium for times when their ads might actually be seen.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? I'd also, go ahead.
Go ahead. If you have a question for me, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Steeler's inquiry. It is an or, so the maximum height, 30, 40 feet above the grade measured at 35, or from the elevation of the ground surface at the base, is current language today.
Any follow-up?
No, no, thank you.
I'd also weigh in, like Susan, in all due respect to the council, I think they erred with going down as low as 500 feet. I realize that a bunch of our billboards in town are currently probably in the 500, 600 square feet, but you're looking at blowing by a billboard every four seconds at freeway speed. And I really think that we should, for two reasons, lengthen it out. One, just so that the billboards that are there, are there, people have time to read them. And it just, it just seems like it's going to be a more of a Vegas look if we pack in three, four more billboards. So I personally would like to see the 1,300 on both, just like we had a, I'm willing to go down to the 1,300 on the dynamic. I think that's what the city's asking for. But I think that the static should be brought up to that same number.
Sure. In their defense, Chair Gerard, the council had quite a bit of discussion at the billboard distance requirement. Again, the 500 feet is what exists in the code today. I will say, my notes, my memory, didn't reflect whether or not they were saying the entire, it doesn't matter, the billboard should be 1,300. I think they even said 13 to 1,500. So staff wrote this and our legal team wrote this, keeping the existing language. I was going to bring that up to the council specifically of whether or not we just utilize the single measurement for both. Does that make sense? Yep?
So you're going to have further discussion with the council?
I will have further discussion, but I do believe this body should make a clear recommendation on this matter.
And they may want that Vegas look, Vegas of the north.
Yeah, that's us, Forest Lake, the Vegas of the north. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none? Would the applicant like to say anything this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Charles Bulcom, 6297 West Shadow Lake Drive in Lionel Lakes. Good evening, commissioners and Chair Gerard and the planning commission. Maybe just to comment on the two questions that were asked, and then I, maybe I'll just share a couple of thoughts. In terms of the billboard at 11th, Commissioner Steeler, that's the, where my signed permit request is at. I have no intention of raising that, just FYI. I think that, I think it's, it was built for that position, and it's visible from both sides. If I had a different sense, if I was too aggressive, I'd go, oh, I could get four more feet, but that is not my intention. And for the record, I have no intention of it being any higher. Commissioner Young, I think, good question about how the marketplace will kind of fall out. You know, in all of these businesses, you, you know, the lifeblood is return business. And so as an advertising partner, if I take investment and then I run it at times when folks aren't going to see it, then you're just taking money that won't return and it's a bad business proposition for both the seller and the buyer. And so my expectation, as I've said since November, is to work with, with local businesses that are small and large. And those images, those ad images are going to need to be able to run in when a variety of traffic is there, and that means throughout the day, across the week. And so I think the marketplace will rule on that, and my intention is not to depart people into places where no one will see those ads. And so that's more of a spirit of business, doing business in this advertising community. And so I, I think you will, you won't have concern about that. Commissioner Kubal, you've talked about getting lots of businesses involved. And so that is my intention. And in fact, I've already started to work to talk to the CEO of the local chamber on ways that we could package up ways for lots of different price points. So that's just a comment about the spirit of that. Two quick comments about what's come up, Chair Gerard, about concealing that pole, you know, concealing that pole. That will add investment for anyone that improves a sign, and it's probably the couple of people that might have a chance to improve these digitally. And so you won't end up with all eight, nine, or 10 of the boards with new cladding because those other boards won't be improved. But I think my spirit of me coming to you is I want to be a good community member. So it's hard for me to argue that I am a good community member if I won't make that look better. I think as it's approved, the first or the first and the second operator will need to partner with city planning and city engineering to come to an agreement on everyone doing the same thing. And as an applicant, I'm ready to do that, and I've already done research on that. My suggestion is, you know, good, better, best, that it's something that looks really good, that's affordable, that lasts, and is maintainable and sustainable. But then we don't necessarily end up with ornate brick all the way up to the top of that. And so some compromise around design, and I've already got my, my design firm and my contractor working on that as of today, as a matter of fact. Just an FYI, it will add somewhere between 8 and 10% to the cost of the overall project. And I'm willing to do that because I'm willing to be invested in the community. So, Chair Gerard, I used more words than I wanted to on that part, but...
Susan?
Yes.
I guess my concern is that Grand Casino Hinckley has much deeper pockets than Ma and Pa Paws, or Mind Have a Crystal's, or Big Apple Bagel, or any other folk in the city. And it is the nature of a business to make sure that you do have a strong income. And I also understand that those large dollars in deep pockets would have a right, paying a significant amount, to those primes. And so that's where my concern is. I understand that the competition, I understand your desire, unfortunately, once we do the sign ordinance, your high level of ethics and your desire to work with the community may not be everyone. And so my concern is not only yours, because you have, you have stayed with us through this entire process, and I appreciate your dedication. It is the next one, and the next one, and the next one.
Yeah. I think, so I think that's very fair. I think that's very fair. I think, so here's just a reaction to that. If that, if that board at 11th that I'm getting a chance to improve remains static, you'd have the two advertisers there. The good news is with this digital inventory, you know, you have room for eight to 10 advertisers on each side. So I think some of those marketplace factors will just dictate that you're going to have, you know, you're going to have the new Ford dealer maybe. But you might, you might have the nursery, right? And you might have the medical business that's smaller with one door, because there's just more inventory. And so I'm not going to dispute what your concerns are. I think that it does give this chance to have more inventory. And then if you end up with a second and maybe a third digital from other players, larger players, they will have the same inventory to fill, and I think naturally it will be with some local businesses. And so, so that's, that's my feedback on that. I think, Chair Gerard, I would like to comment on the distance. I think just, because I've been at every session. We ended here in February 9th. This group was at 1,800 to 2,000 feet and wanting one standard, one standard. The council meeting a week or so later, very good discussion. The way that I recorded, in my mind, the feedback was, they wanted one standard as well, and they were talking about 1,300 to 1,500 feet. And so that's just some feedback. If you do end up with the static at 500, and Chair Gerard, the way it's written is it's across the highway as well as along the highway, right? It's a circumference. It would mean, and we talked about this at both meetings, it would mean that you, you know, you're not going to end up with 11 more signs. You'd end up with potentially one or two more signs. And so if you ended up at that 1,300 to 1,500 feet, you'd be in a situation where there'd be, the status quo would be in place. You wouldn't end up with more billboards. So that's just, I wanted to give that feedback. I don't have a horse in that game, if you will, right? I think distance between the digitals, as we talked about, we don't want eight digitals out there because it's a bad business proposition. I might not, I might not do my project if we had eight digitals because there'd be too much inventory. And so I like that distance. Otherwise, it's what the community feels is the right thing to do. So any questions for me?
Any, any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Yeah, grateful, thank you.
This is a public hearing. But we'll, the way this will work tonight is that we will open the public hearing. We'll ask anyone who wishes to address this application, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple minutes giving your thoughts. It's pretty much a one-way conversation. We take feedback, and then we usually will give a little update after that. After we, all parties have been heard from, we will close the public hearing. It'll come back for a decision by the commission on how we want to move forward. So with that, it is 7:22. I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Karen, do we have anyone online or any emails to be read in?
Chair Gerard, I have no one online, and I did not receive any emails regarding this.
Alright, I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? And Karen, I'll ask you one more time. Anyone jump on and heat it up?
No one, no one rushed to it, no.
Okay, seeing no one coming forward and no one online, we will close the public hearing at 7:23 and bring it back to the commissioners for decisions on how we want to move forward. The staff has put together that we will need two motions this evening. We will need a motion to recommend to the city council, they will have final say on this, so it's a recommendation to city council to make this zoning text amendment. And the second one will be to deny the applicant's request. And we were going to deny the applicant's request because their request is really being superseded in a sense with the zoning text amendment. So, and there was, like, the distance was larger on his and some of this other stuff. So that is why we would be denying the application. It's not that the applicant cannot move forward, he, the applicant will just need to move forward following the ordinance once the city council approves it.
Chair Gerard, I wrote in my staff report that you actually would make a motion to deny, that would actually be a motion to recommend denial, because the council has formal approval on zoning, all zoning text amendments.
You missed that word, didn't you?
That, yeah, I missed that word.
How bright do you think I am up here? Any discussion? Hearing none? The chair is looking for a motion or two?
I move to recommend the city council approve the city staff recommended zoning ordinance text amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So that's 500 feet between billboards?
The way it is in here.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. 500-foot radius?
Yes.
Would you be open to a friendly amendment to make it 1,300 feet?
Yes.
You have to say that.
Yes, I'm open to a friendly amendment for 1,300 feet.
Do we have a second?
We'll be agreeable to that. Chair?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
That I can agree to.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Chair is looking for a second motion.
I move to deny the applicant's, I move to...
Recommend denial.
Recommend the denial of the applicant's requested zoning ordinance text amendment relating to the modifications to the billboard regulations.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with the city council. Commissioner Young?
Abby, could you please highlight to the council the change from 500?
Yes, of course I will.
And would it be helpful if members of the planning commission were at the city council meeting that this will be discussed at?
I don't think so. I, like I said, to their credit, just my memory, it's not an age thing, maybe not, I don't know. I think they had also agreed with this body that it should be a single measurement distance. And I think that body, the council even was favorable to 1,500 feet. So I will be highlighting those things. I don't think that anyone from this body needs to be here, but your council member liaison, Councilmember Roberts is here as well, so I think he'll help convey that to the council for me on Monday. Councilmember, will you carry our water for us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Item 6B, the resolutions 03-22-23-01 for 880 15th Street Southwest, the site plan review, parking lot expansion. And I'm not sure, Ken, are you presenting?
I'll take this one, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The request before you this evening is for a site plan review and approval for a parking lot expansion for the property at 880 15th Street Southwest. The location map has come up on your screen. Let's see, this will show a little better. It's an existing office building on the corner, and the proposal is, if you could see my cursor, adding a parking lot in here to the site. And this is the site plan that's been proposed for this parking lot expansion. Property's in a B3 zoning district, so it has an existing about 17,000-square-foot office, industrial building that was originally built in 1990. Currently has several small office spaces that are leased to internet automobile or motor vehicle dealers that they conduct their office operations, office operations. The state of Minnesota requires each auto dealer or motor vehicle dealer to have an office space. And many of them have migrated to this building, at least in this area. So, and then there's a couple other businesses in there as well. The proposed parking lot expansion, again, is in the northeast corner of the property here. They're adding that primarily to allow for more, obviously more parking on site, I think primarily for vehicle inventory for the auto sales, motor vehicle sales businesses that are in the, in the existing office building. Again, they, if we went by the current code standards for office space, they would need 85 parking stalls, there's currently 59, counting this spot on the west side as well, and the spots out front. With the proposal, they're adding 76 additional spaces, so there would be a total of 135 spaces on site when it's all done. One thing they are asking to do, and staff is generally supportive of what's being One thing they are asking to do, and staff is generally supportive, wrong click, shift it, they are asking to have spaces that are eighteen feet long and only eight feet wide. Code usually requires nine-foot wide spaces. However, in this case, they're intending all this, almost all this area, to be for inventory storage. It wouldn't be the typical customers coming and going from that area. I don't have a, a big concern about that. It's going to be their parking lot and their vehicles, and hopefully they know how to park in narrow spots, because it'll be for their own use. They are proposing additional landscaping of the site. Yeah, wrong button again. Didn't get there. There we go. This, this actually shows, too, the parking lot layout. The purple area are the drive aisles, which are twenty-four feet wide, which is the minimum required by code, so there's good access if need to get in there, especially for emergency vehicles. It's just the spaces themselves will be smaller than typical. They were proposing, or are proposing landscaping along the boulevard here, which is required by code, if for a new construction for parking lots. Staff will be working with the applicant and the applicant's designers to finalize that landscape plan, to make a best fit. There are some private underground utilities there that have to be worked around, but that's not anything that we can't figure out, so we will do so. What else? Let's see. They, they have submitted a lighting plan. It does need a couple of revisions, because a couple of the areas are, would be a little too bright, but they're aware of that. Our city engineer did review the plans. There's been work going back and forth between the project engineer and our city engineer in the last month or so, and the, these plans don't reflect it, but the project engineer has got their plans, I think, pretty well dialed in with what our city engineer is requiring. So I don't expect any issues with that. They are not proposing any additional accesses onto the street. Again, the, there's a driveway here, a driveway here on Fifteenth, and then one for this parking lot over here off of Ninth. Those will not change. Again, just additional parking up in this corner of the site. They have worked with the watershed district, and have a preliminary approval for this plan with the grading and all the wetland work, or hopefully not too much work. But any final plans and final approvals will be subject to approval by the watershed district. So we do have a resolution for your consideration this evening. We're recommending commission adopt it, and that's for the approval of the expansion of the parking lot at eight eighty Fifteenth Street Southwest. And that resolution has eleven conditions of approval that are included in it. Probably a couple of things to point out. These are, most of these are standard conditions now for the city. We'll be working with our city attorney to approve, to work through a development or site improvement agreement for the project. The condition A is that all construction activity and material storage must be kept on-site and cannot be stored on the public streets. That the applicant revise their plans to meet all the conditions of city engineer. Again, that's pretty well done. We are also requesting that they improve the gate for the dumpster, which is right here. It's not in the best of shape. We'll work with their designer, again, and staff on finalizing the landscape plan for along Fifteenth. And, again, that's the highlights of the conditions that are, those are in the resolution. I guess with that, I will stop and take questions. The applicant's representative is here as well to answer questions.
Questions of staff? Susan?
I just have one. When I, reading a little bit about the privacy fencing, so do we have a height that that's, that's intended to be? And is it going to be, is there fencing that's already there that they're going to kind of add on to, just so it doesn't get to be way too high?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the only fencing I was referring to in the report was for the gate, for the dumpster enclosure here.
Okay, so that's the only place where there's going to be fencing?
Correct.
Okay.
It was not a perimeter fence. If there was, the maximum height would be six feet.
Okay, then, then my question becomes a little bit about, and, and this is just because I don't understand the industry, but with all these cars parked in the same spot, and ways to get it out pretty easily, and the increased theft of catalytic converters, is that something that we have to worry about, that we're kind of putting a, an open area for the potential for, like, somebody to come out and cut out all the catalytic converters at this location? Is that a concern?
I'll, I'll give that a shot, Mr. Chair. With all the dealers on the west side of the freeway, I don't know that it's a problem. I, what I've heard is more it's shopping centers and parking lot lots that are targeted, but I'm no expert in it either. I bet Jeff would have a comment on it.
It's probably the, I'd say there's probably be more apt to have a theft or something like that in, like, the Home Depot parking lot.
Okay.
It'd only take some moments to roll underneath a car with a sawzall and saw that thing off. So, I think as far as adding additional stipulations to his thing, it's kind of maybe, it's up to, I, I guess it would probably be up to him if he'd want to do something like that. But I don't think it's going to really deter any possibility of theft.
Susan?
Ken, as, as I've looked at, at developments that we've, we've approved over time, do we do anything to make sure that landscaping will be maintained? In other words, if they, they put some, some irrigation in, and they, they put in the pipe, and that's, that's relatively cheap to put in, but then they never turn it on, or, or the landscaping dies. Our intention is that there shall be, landscape shall be maintained, but I don't see that in our, in our requirements. Is that something we should be considering?
Mr. Chair and Susan, if it's, it's my take on it, and my experience from other cities, if it's, if the landscaping is shown as part of an improved plan, it's up to the applicant, the property owner, to keep that landscaping growing. So if it dies in three years, and the city gets a complaint, or the city is aware of it, we can go back to the owner and say, this is your approved plan, this is what you agreed to put in, this is what you did put in, it didn't work. Either you got to replant it, or propose a different plan, maybe the vegetation wasn't the right mix for the, that location. Because part of the approval is approving this set of plans, and the landscape plan is one of those plans, and they are, my, every, every place I've worked, I think the intention here is, it's no different than if they have to put in certain lighting or certain materials on a building, if it's a new building construction, it's all part of the approved plans, and so they have to maintain it that way unless they ask to do, and get approval by the city to do something different.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? The applicant is here. Would you like to say a few words about your proposal? I ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Ron Touche, seven zero seven eight East Fish Lake Road, Maple Grove, representing the owner of the property, John Buzyk, tonight. He's not available, although we've been friends for forty-five years, so we know each other well. Thanks for the opportunity, Mr. Chair and commissioners, to bring this forward tonight. Our goal here, kind of like Mr. Balkum's, is to operate the business and elevate this property and our business to be successful and continue to be successful. And along with that, it needs to look good, and it needs to provide a good environment for our tenants that run their businesses there. Your comment on the converters is certainly apt. We had one in the middle of our parking lot at lunchtime, and somebody saw him park there, and it was gone in seconds. Just astonishing. I had another one in, at one of my buildings in Elk River last Friday. Thousand dollars' worth of converters. And one of the things that we've discovered is that when it's hidden, it happens even more, because they're hidden with that. So we really don't want to hide it. We want the parking lot to be really reasonably well-lit, not extravagantly lit, because that doesn't feel right either. But we want to make sure that we, we not only have a good-looking property, but it's a safe property. And the design of this parking lot was really put forth to do that. If it's hard to get in and hard to get out, it's a problem. We need to work that security aspect with cameras and lighting and processes, as opposed to overt things. And, you know, the thieves are going to do what the thieves are going to do. That's the other problem. Until the good folks in St. Paul decide that they've had enough with that, and put some laws in place that prevents that, the economic viability, that I think we're going to have to just deal with that. So, aside from that, from a landscaping perspective, our goal here is to bring this property up. We've had, working with, with Ken, which has been fantastic. I do like the deal. It's always nice to work back and forth and say, what do you think? What, what works good? And we've actually redesigned this parking lot to kind of straighten some stuff out and make it look better, and kind of get rid of some of the old stuff that was not really what today's standards are. And so, we've really come up with a nice opportunity. Still got this strange corner there that we got to go. We've gotten rid of an extra drive already that was just meaningless there, and, and we're going to continue to, to bring this property to newer standards as we work the business. So, we just love doing business in Forest Lake. So, it's a great, it's, it's been a great market for us. Great people.
If you want, I'll just wait once. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. We may have some later.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
This is not a public hearing, so it's up to us to bring it back to us for a decision on, on how we'd like to proceed. My, my personal comment would be that I think it's a nice upgrade to Fifteenth. As we know, the four dealers coming in down the road there, so this is a second improvement on that area, so I, I'm all for it. That's my two cents.
Big truck, please do the big camera. They, all they do is trucks.
Other comments, concerns?
Do we set any kind of precedent by allowing the eight-feet parking space that could be unwanted down the road somewhere for some reason?
You know, I, I think, and I'll answer for Ken here, just, so, I'll give my opinion and Ken will give his. I, I don't think it's, it's a big deal. If it was going to become more commercial property, we could require them, when they would come back in, to restripe it to nine-foot wide.
On basis, on per basis, use?
I, I would think, you know, there'd be probably a change in use, and-
Correct.
We'd be able to do something there.
Okay.
Am I wrong on that, Susan?
I don't-
You're shaking your head this way.
I don't think that we, if they were to sell and, and have another use that was compliant with the, the standards, and I don't think that we would, it would come back to us necessarily.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, only if they came in for some kind of a site plan revision, or a conditional use permit, if there was a particular use, then we could require it. But I think in reality, if and when the uses change in the building, I can't imagine trying to operate more regular businesses with eight-foot stalls. It just doesn't work. I would think the economics and the reality of it, that somebody would figure out that they'd need to restripe it on their own. I'm not too concerned about it, and it's, I certainly don't see it as a precedent, because it's a very unique, relatively isolated use and situation, in my opinion.
Other questions, Don? Fallip?
No, no, I'm good with that.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. The chair is looking for a motion to adopt the resolution, and we will be the final on this. So, the chair's open for motions.
I move that the city staff recommends the planning commission approval of resolution three twenty-two twenty-three oh one. The resolution for approval of the site plan for the proposed expansion of the parking lot for the property located at eight eighty Fifteenth Street Southwest, with the property ID number of zero seven dash zero three two dash twenty-one dash forty-three dash zero zero nine, is approved with the subject of the conditions one through eleven proposed by the staff, and that's in the report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Only that the property ID had an extra zero in there. Needs an extra zero, from what she said, but as written in the-
It's an awful lot of numbers.
As written there, it's correct.
I was already impressed with that motion. I mean, that, that one rocked.
All right, let's bring her back. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So the planning commission is the final on this, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what all happens after that, but since you've had a good relationship with Ken, it will continue. So good luck on your project.
Thank you.
We welcome the business expansion. We are on our discussion. What are we discussing tonight?
We, we have no discussion items from staff, unless there is anything that the commission wants to discuss, or has any questions of staff right now?
Just, just in general questions, or, or does that come under the other next? I do have something for the other.
The other? Well, we got, we got either one, I suppose.
Okay, yeah. Is it possible to pull up a, a map of, of City or Clear Lake mainly, on the frontage road along Thirty-Five, which is either Hornsby or-
Eureka Avenue?
Eureka.
Sure.
As we get into springtime and the ice melts off the lake, we're going to have thirty or forty people fishing along there, which I have no problem with them fishing along there. But you get families, young kids, you get semis going down that road. Even though I did notice there's a five-ton axle weight limit sign on there, nobody seems to pay much attention to that. And in addition to the safety element, there's an element of, of the additional garbage in the area, and there's not any receptacles over there. There's just, I think there's a dumpster at the, at the boat launch, but there we go. And, so that whole strip right along the road, and you can see, there's, if you've driven down there, there's, in some spaces, not even ten feet. And there will be cars parked all along the side of that, of the frontage road. Yeah, zoom into the frontage road, not, there, there you go. And there'll be families and, and all fishing from the boat launch all the way up. So, I don't know what can be done there, but I think the city council should think about it before the ice melts. Or, or police, or somebody should, should take, I, I think it should be thought of before something really, really bad happens, because people don't drive just forty down that road either. So, but even if it's just taking care of the garbage issue would be, would be nice, too. I've gone down there and found, you know, thirty-gallon garbage bags with televisions and computers and all kinds of stuff. So, that's just bringing it up, that it's the time of year to, to think about it.
All righty. Any other questions of staff on our discussion? Otherwise, we'll move to our other.
Staff, what is your projection for the next month or two in terms of our meetings?
Yes.
Yes. Do we will have consistent meetings for the next, we know through April for sure.
There's at least three items for the next meeting, if not four.
I was going to ask if there are short agendas, long agendas, complicated?
Um, we don't have, yes. Like Ken said, it's, it's three, maybe four on the next meeting. We're really trying to balance out that we don't end up with a lot of complicated items on one meeting. It was really nice to have a little bit of break the last time. I don't ever really like to say things out loud, like, wow, we didn't have a meeting last time, and this one is almost done by eight, because you know you'll have, you know you'll have some heavier ones coming up. But we're really trying to look at how we can also balance those out, so that maybe it's three next time and three the after, instead of a four. those out so that maybe it's three next time and three the after instead of a four and it's, you know, a two. And so there is quite a bit still occurring, it's all fairly minor stuff, but yes, we will consistently have meetings in April for sure.
So for example, the next meeting, I know there's a setback variance for rebuilding a house on Forest Lake, a concept plan review of a five-lot subdivision, and a site plan review of a parking lot expansion for an existing warehouse.
Set the five lots off Two Hundred and Second?
Between Two Ten and Two Hundred and Second off of Ingersoll?
Yeah. We remember that one.
They've done a lot of work on it since.
And then the, Monday is our applications submitted deadline for our second meeting in April, but we do already know that there's more than likely a site plan review. We believe that Mr. Carwash will be in front of you in the end of April. We're also in discussions with a couple other applicants about getting things in, some that have submitted stuff and are waiting on one or two items, nearly complete. So I imagine we'll have probably three good, solid discussion items on both of those meetings.
All right, we will move to our other section, and councilperson Roberts, I hate to put you on a spot here, but we usually start with, for lack of a better term, the highest ranking member. So if you have anything you'd like to share with us?
No, I appreciate that, Chair Gerard, I just want to introduce myself, Blake Roberts, joined the city council here in, in January. Up until that, an hour before the first meeting, I didn't realize I was going to be the liaison. The mayor had asked me to be so, I thought I'd be on the EDA, but just looking forward to working with you in any capacity, feedback, it's, it's great, and you guys, you, you guys are the, the bad guys typically when you tell people what they can and cannot do, which is, is good. The council gets to, you know, go off your recommendations, but I am, you know, open to any suggestions, feedback after or before meetings, and appreciate your time and volunteering because again, it's, it's a thankless job, and so I've, I'm open to have any conversation with anyone, but thanks for your time.
Any questions for our esteemed councilperson this evening?
Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Gerard.
Thanks.
Look forward to working with you. With that, we'll move on online. Have you anything else?
Just a couple. One, you may have received, you should have received an email from me earlier this week that we have hired, the community development department has hired a new administrative assistant, Don Boogie. Did you get that? I see a lot.
Nope.
Because I think I just sent it to the council. You'll get an email advising.
I got it.
I did.
Did you really?
He's still getting council emails.
Oh, I, well, I apologize, commissioners. I put the Parks Commission on it, and I put the council, and I didn't put you, anyways.
Guess we don't mean anything to her.
I, we have a new admin support who will be, who started on Monday, Don Boogie. She has experience working in both Lionel Lakes and Blaine. She took a few years off to spend some time with family, but is back in the workforce, and we're really excited to have somebody that can help just really evaluate processes and procedures and help kind of get us back into a better filing system even. She will take over some of the support roles that Karen has been fulfilling for some time for the commission, though Don won't actually be in the commission meetings now that we've, we tape them, we have audio and video. Her time's really well spent in the office, so she'll still be doing minutes for us, but won't actually be in our meetings, and we'll make that transition happen over the next couple of months. So you might still see Karen for a meeting or two if I sweet talk her, but just know that pretty soon we'll that, have that transition fully occur. And then also just to follow up on Commissioner Steeler's comments about Eureka Avenue, the city is aware, the city council is aware, and administration is aware of just Eureka Avenue, the condition of Eureka Avenue, the limited nature of Eureka Avenue. We have submitted a bonding bill request for the reconstruction of Eureka Avenue that will not only look at the road itself, but also the opportunities for really designated parking pedestrian amenities, because there are some, there are some significant safety concerns. We have really highlighted that because of the reconstruction of Highway Ninety-seven in the next few years and Eleventh, that Eureka Avenue is going to have a lot more pressure placed on it as those two projects. We're really hoping that the county and the state are lining these projects up, that they're not occurring at the same time, but it does kind of look like they're starting to line up where both of those projects are going to occur at the same time. It sounds like that, that bill, bonding bill request may be gaining a little bit of, of legs, and so we're hoping that we might be able to secure some assistance for that project in the future, because I think if you've taken it recently, I thought you were going to bring up the amount of just potholes that are on it. They are everywhere, 'tis the pothole season, but yes, it is, it is a very uncomfortable road for a lot of different reasons. I will bring up to Chief Peterson, Rick Peterson, our police chief, to keep an eye out, because I did just notice that, that weight ton limit, I think it was maybe when I was driving, driving slowly on the right-hand side because a semi was coming at me really surprisingly, but I will, I will ask him to take a look at that. Other than that, I don't have any other updates or anything else for the commission right now.
Ken, anything?
No, Mr. Chair, not at this point.
Karen?
Thank you, Chair Gerard, I have no updates.
Anita?
No updates, no comments.
Justin?
Nothing from me.
Jeff?
Nothing from me, sir.
Dan? Susan?
I did talk to Karen afterwards, but that's it.
I only have one comment. Commissioner Young, if, if you read the Forest Lake paper, you saw her picture for the bullet plunge.
I haven't seen it.
And I, and I meant to bring it in to get her autograph, so she's quite an esteemed member of the community. I don't remember if it was on page one or page two, but it, it's a great picture of her, so if you haven't seen the paper, give yourself a copy.
Oh, God.
With, with that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second, it's a non-debatable motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion, meetings adjourned. Thank you all for your time and your effort this evening.